Would you make sure that that was on? Here.
Me.
Okay, do we ready guys? Okay.
Besar City Joint Regular Committee's meeting will be called to order Thursday, July 19th, at 2:00, 2018, at 6:00 P.M. Members present are Mark McKiever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Monica Sack, myself, and Andrew Shaw. First order Besar City Joint Regular Committee meetings was called to order by myself at 6:00 P.M. First up, we have public participation. Do we have anybody that would like to address council this evening?
Should we be part of the first?
Yep, that's why I was... All right, next up, we have order committee business. First up, we have Economic Development Committee, and let us call that order at 6:01 P.M. Up for the Economic Development Committee, we have the Community Reinvestment Act for residential. I'll read through this real quick here before we have Ms. Wolf come up to the podium. "Community reinvestment areas." Pogomeyer Design Group has proposed working with the city to come up with a new city-wide community reinvestment area that would incorporate residential properties as well as commercial properties for a fee of up to $7,000. Law Director Rob Ratliff notes that the city's CRA needs to be updated to incorporate annexed areas and suggests that it could be beneficial to have a vehicle to incentivize the rehabilitation of rental properties in the city. He characterizes $7,000 fee as very reasonable. It was noted that while the property tax on a residential property's increased valuation due to improvement would be a bait, a residential CRA could also result in higher property values overall and potentially more students for the local school district. McKiever made a motion to refer the matter to Finance Committee, which was seconded by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Vogue recesses Economic Development Committee at 6:55 P.M. And we have Ms. Wolf from the Auditor's Office to hear this speech this evening.
Well, I don't really have anything prepared, but I was going to, I know that Mark asked me to give him like an overview of what happens with real estate. What normally will happen is, you know, every six years we have a reappraisal. Tax year 2018 is the reappraisal year, so taxes will go out in January, it will be within the new values. What we have seen happen with the community reinvestment area, Crestline House Run, and when they passed theirs was that when they were trying to become a city. And they went ahead and passed their CRA in order to have people come in, build new homes, update their homes, whatever. And it did work for a little bit. They didn't become a city for like a year or two, and then they lost population again, and was back down below. But what they did is anything, any new construction, they come and they make application through the city, and then the city will actually monitor to make sure that they did what they made application for, whether it's they'll build a new house, build a new garage, put on a new deck, whatever. And then when we pick up the new construction, and we pick up the new construction based on your building permits. Once the building permits come in, our appraisers will go out and pick up whatever the new construction is, will apply value pricing schedules to that, and Crestline did a five-year abatement, 50, 40, 30, 20, 10. So the first year you got taxed on 50% of the increased value, on the second year 40, 30, 20, 10, and then you're at 100%, you're at full. It's up to you guys as far as whatever kind of CRA you have. We will enforce whatever you come up with, and we'll go from there. So like I said, we, all of our new construction is based on your building permits. That's why every January we ask for copies of your building permits, and then we, you know, co-admit in our system, we send out our appraisers to pick up whatever was new. And again, keep in mind, what we value that is outside, and like if somebody has a, puts in new windows, they have the old storm, or just old windows, no storm windows, no, you know, nothing like that, that would be an increase. If it's just they had good windows, they just didn't like the looks of them, and they put in new windows, that's maintenance. Maintenance doesn't normally increase the value of a property. It increases economic life of the property, but not necessarily the value of the property. So, you know, replacing a roof, that's maintenance. We value, based on the square footage of the house, things like a new bathroom will add value. If you do exterior features, if you put on an open tray porch, and do a porch there before. If you just replace a porch, again, you know, you expect that just to keep the value the same. Air conditioning, that will increase the value of the, but if you take it, you take out a wall inside, we never go inside. And we do mass appraisal, we go through fee appraisal. Fee appraisal, you're going to have somebody walk through every single house. We don't do that, and you couldn't afford, you know, the difference of $28 a parcel to, to appraise is compared to $200 a parcel, and we have 34,000 parcels in the house. So it's not going to happen. We will go through if somebody actually wants us to, but there is a thing called, if you buy, buy a house and you spend less money than what we have at our floor, you can take that to the board, you can file a complaint, take that to the Board of Revision. The Board of Revision is made up of the Auditor, the Treasurer, and the President of the Board of County Commissioners, and you have the opportunity to come before it's semi-legal committee, and you can come and you can present your information as far as why you think your property is overvalued. Rarely, but sometimes we have had people say their property's under-valued, and like I said, that's very, very rare. Probably one hand.
Right before sale?
Right before they have listed it to get a higher value, yes. But because we do, do square footage and value it that way, just because you take out a wall and now there's four rooms instead of five, that's not going to change the value. So, anything specific?
Right, and my one question is, we have houses that are in disrepair.
Right.
But they are sound by, like might be on a sound foundation, and let's say the appraised value of that house is only $10,000. And nobody, nobody wants to buy it. So if we sell it and it needs major renovation, as in wiring, plumbing...
You own it?
Well, no, I'm saying, they...
Somebody sells it.
Say somebody buys it and we could offer, is it, would that apply to that if they put it, I mean, the house is only valued, valued at 10 grand, but it could be potentially, say, 80,000. Could that apply for them to come in and make the necessary improvements to bring it up to that value? And how much time can they do that in? And how can they, can they have a private appraiser come in and...
Yeah, that's evidence. I mean, that, you can present any kind of evidence to the Board of Revision. I'm only one of three people on the Board of Revision, but you, any kind of evidence, a recent sale, like, what we are charged with doing in the Auditor's Office is valuing the property. We have to come up with a testament of market value.
Correct.
And it's just an estimate.
Correct.
But it's an estimate based on what's happened in the past. You know, we don't try to set the market, we try to reflect market, and there is a difference. So if houses in this neighborhood are selling for 10% less, you know, my value when it comes reappraisal or triennial update time should reflect that.
Yeah, we're trying to find a way to incentivize some of the landlords to...
To bid for them.
...to fix them up, and so that they could get a tax write-off. I mean, it won't be immediate, but, you know, let's say some of these houses that are in disrepair that are only, you know, 15,000, 20,000 dollars, and if he puts, the owner puts in 40,000, 50,000 dollars and raises the value another...
Well, you're, dollar for dollar...
Well, no, no, I'm saying if it raises the value into...
But what I'm saying is, dollar for dollar, if I had a $15,000 house and I put $40,000 into it, that does not necessarily mean that it's going to be a $55,000 house.
Correct, correct.
It depends on what they actually are doing.
Right, and would they, is there any guidelines that tell us what is considered, other than a bathroom, like you said, what would be considered actual raising the actual value?
Well, keep in mind, I'm not going in the houses.
Right, I mean, but what would you...
If the foundation is cracked, you know, if the porch is falling down, if they're fixing...
Major structure issues?
If they're fixing the structure that is in disrepair, I mean, that's what we're going for.
Right, right.
Because again, we don't go inside the house. The, the state revised code reflects that, for the most part, the outside of the house is what the inside of the house looks like also.
Okay, so say there is a house on Spring Street, I won't put the exact location of it, near, near this couple's house, and the roof is, got major holes in it, and there was a fire inside of it. So it could put a new roof on that since it is structurally gone, portions of it, would that be considered? Because it's missing quite a bit of a roof.
Well, first of all, we'd have to know if, if we ever reduced the value because of, of the destruction.
Correct.
And I don't, without knowing the house...
I, I don't want to say...
I don't know. Normally, if they do like a destroyed building form, or if you guys get notified about that and you sell a permit, we'll go back out and check it. Either we'll take the value down, or, you know, if they're doing new construction, we'll bring it out and back up.
Okay, so we could get a guideline from you, what, I was saying, because that's what most of the people are going to want, what are the guidelines and what would they have to...
I could probably come up with some guidelines for you, yes. But again, whatever you grant, we're going to, we're administrating. We, we will enforce whatever we pass.
Right, but we also need to know what you accept and what you don't accept. I mean, what's, what's acceptable or what's not. I, I mean, by the law and that, I don't know what, I don't know all your taxes. I don't know your requirements for, you know, like you said, you can't do just paint in the house, but, you know, structurally, you know, some guidelines like that.
I could probably come up with some guidelines for you, yes.
I think that would help us sell it to them.
That's my question. That's the chairman. What, is there, who, who governs this, this city Ohio revise code, as far as the CRA?
It's in the Ohio revise code.
Okay, is there a maximum length of time and a maximum percentage?
I don't know that.
Mr. Ratliff, do you know the answer to that?
I do. Yeah, I believe it's 20 years and 15 years.
15 years.
15 years, up to 100% of real property and revalued. And it's our determination on whether, how we can set the schedule, what percentage we give, how long the terms are, that's all up to us.
So the maximum would be 100% for all 15 years?
Yep.
Okay.
100% of the...
Real property.
Of the real property.
Of the improvement.
The improvement, yeah.
And, and again, you need to have that in writing and approved. I mean, the application has to be done. It's my understanding, any abatement, anytime you really reduce the value, you have to have accept what it was to start with and what we're going to do.
But that's what I'm saying, guideline, we need true.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman. And I think that's one of the things here that we're talking about, you have a copy of it here from Pogomeyer that they were in here and gave us, and they're the ones that, that, that know all of this and will guide us through there. Like you say, there's going to be a thousand and one decisions that are going to have to be made, and we need it all in writing, that everyone can see it, and everyone can have an opportunity to look at it, get all of the forms together, get everything like that that needs to be presented to the county, and also that we need to keep on record here. This is, this is a good opportunity for us, I think, that, that, to do this residential. Yes.
On the, you know, when you filed the complaint for the reduction of your property taxes, so does that have to be done prior to this process? You know, prior to getting the...
In order to break down.
...real property value adjustment.
We may bring it down through the reappraisal process, the law. I mean, at least for, for the true reappraisal for 2018. You have a bad, I mean, if there's a structure out there that is not sound or it's in disrepair, because we had appraisers go out right now, hopefully we've got it right. But again, there, we go through the informal process also, that you can bring information in before the values are set for 2018 appraisal, and if they bring in information that shows that we have it wrong, we will do it before the values are set.
And there's one, there's basically one portion of the year when you can do the complaint?
You can do the complaint from January, first Monday of January through March the 1st.
Okay. Is it possible that that could be a year-round option, to be able to do that at any time?
The complaints?
Yeah.
No.
That's not...
That's in the revised code.
Okay. That's all I have.
Anybody else?
I think I've got one question for you as well. As far as, I know you guys do yours every six years.
Right.
And you do it...
And then we, and every three years we do what's called a triennial update. But with a triennial update, you don't actually visit the property, you analyze how properties are selling, and then we do a percentage increase or decrease based on how the market is going.
Okay, so if, for instance, next year, somebody wants to have their property reevaluated, they would have to take care of that on their own, you wouldn't actually send someone out to do an outside appraisal?
If they could point out that we have something wrong, okay, we can do it for the following year. Or if they do it through the Board of Revision process, yes. Right, it can be reduced, but it's still that January to March timeframe. And that's simply because it gives you time, revised code, there's always a reason why the revised code is done the way it is. You pay taxes in January and June, and what they do is they give you time to, you get your first half taxes, you'll see what it's valued at, you'll see what the taxes are. We don't look at the taxes, we look at the value, and if you see that there's something wrong with the value, we can, and you can prove that there's something wrong with the value, then we can do something about it, and then we'll have time to get it done if we're setting half tax though.
I actually knew somebody that went through that process once with the end of property and the value of it, so. Which they're very helpful.
There's an awful lot of properties out there that don't have plumbing and heating and, you know, they, they, I mean, it's the properties that you guys are looking at. You know, that there is something wrong with them, but because we don't go into them, we don't go there.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say? Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now you can go back to all your other jobs here.
I have to go home and go the long way.
Long, could be longer either way.
With that being said, I will turn the Economic Development Committee at 6:17 P.M.
Oh, so then, just public plans and buildings. So, all public plans and buildings, to order at 6:17. And first word of business is a swimming pool bid repair. I guess we're just putting this out for bid, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, let's do that.
Just one moment.
Okay.
Here, one moment here. We need to go back to you, to the, you need to reopen your meeting again, because we do need to make an appropriation for the money to get Pogomeyer going with this CRA so that we can start on, working on our, what we want for, for our own program. And you have here a copy of the letter from Pogomeyer, and the cost is $7,000, as my understanding, and we don't have any money in any line to cover that right now. Is that not correct, Mr. Law Director?
That would be nice, I suppose.
Okay. Auditor?
I'd have to get my trial balance out to be sure. I think I could probably find it somewhere, but I do want to ask the Law Director, because David asked me the other day about the money that we have sitting in our CRA monitoring. Is there, are we allowed to use that for something like this? Are you aware of that? I didn't know if it was just for, you know, the employees in your office that do that monitoring to make sure that they're...
That, that CRA monitoring fund can be used, can be used for the cost of Pogomeyer if they were to be maintaining and updating our CRA enterprise zone. And that's kind of the second step to this, is once we get it up and running and have the, the CRA in place for residential housing, if you choose to do that. One of the things they're going to do as part of that is also update our CRA enterprise zone, because there were prior amelizations where it didn't get updated a year ago. So that funding is available for, essentially it's in, Pogomeyer writes it up, so it's in place for somebody to do that. So that money could be used for Pogomeyer for maintaining and updating our enterprise zone and our CRA. And this is maintaining and updating our CRA.
And expanding CRA.
We're expanding it, but we're also maintaining and updating. So probably want to look at that code level to check, but my initial reaction would be yes, if there are CRA enterprise zone funds available there specifically for...
Because we currently have about $14,000 in that funds.
Then that would be...
And that's a separate fund though than the general fund.
Yes, yes.
It's, it's required to be, to be held separate, used in pass for, for staff and for enterprise zones. And that's...
What, do you want to further review that?
If we, if we, if we can use that, we'll need to do that appropriation.
Right.
If we cannot, I will look and see, I, I may be able to pull it out of our other government services lines and cover it there, but I just need to know if this is possible.
Yeah, no, I hadn't thought about using those funds. I, I'll give you definitive answer, but I think, I think probably be able to use that for this, because that's, that's what it's there for.
Okay, until we want this part put on hold then? Until we get or, until we get a positive answer? I don't know how, is Pogomeyer having here on any kind of a deadline about this, or...
No, but, you know...
This is dated in May.
Yeah, no, there, there's no, no real deadlines to it.
Unless we find out and do a special meeting, like prior to the next, I mean, if you want to authorize that.
Yeah, we could do that, prior to the next council meeting, if we could hold an Economic Development Committee meeting if we needed to. Do you want to handle it that way?
Yeah, that's fine. If we can use those, if we can use those funds, I wish I think we can, but if we can get definitive answer, we can use those funds, it's very simple.
Yeah, and then, and then you're rolling more quickly.
Yes, is that okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's why I asked her about those funds the other day, because if it's already there...
Minutes reflect that then.
Well, with that, with that, I can make a comment. I didn't say anything, because I thought it wasn't a big deal, but now we're, we're going to have to pull money out of somewhere else. Okay, so this guy buys his house, it's worth $10,000, okay? And he puts $40,000 into it, inside, and he's going to run down to the county auditor and tell them, hey, my house is worth $40,000 more? No.
No, that's not what she said. That's not what she said. You had to bring evidence to show the increase in value. Just because you, like she said, just because you put 40,000 in doesn't mean the value went up 40,000.
So probably that property owner would need to get an appraiser to come in and reappraise it and show that as evidence to this board that yes, I've raised the property.
See where I'm going?
I know where he's going. He's going, he's going back to somebody's not going to want to pay the difference in taxable value, but the whole idea behind the CRA is that you don't pay that difference. It's a bait.
Right. So I guess my, I'm just, it's making me think, okay, is this a good idea if people are going to do things like that? And that, that was our goal, was to get them to go in and fix these up. Now, you know, if it's siding or foundations and things like that, yeah, but so, I just...
But they could put 40,000 in it and maybe it would only increase the value 20.
Right.
But it's a structurally sound property now.
The interior means they're going to also get from building permits, she said. If it's a, if it's a good type structural... So even if they don't report it, it'll be done, reassessed through the building. But I mean, I guess, my thought here would be is if you're going to go and dump $40,000 on the inside of a structure and not do anything to the outside, you're not going to want to throw your 40 grand down the drain either. I mean, if you can get that property tax abated and still get that value, that means that you could probably turn around and sell that house and make a penny off of it. I, I guess, I understand what you're saying, Dan. I get exactly what you're saying, I just, but to me, I just, I don't see it that way.
It is a good idea, but I don't know. And hopefully they use it. I mean, I'm not against it.
No, 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 I get exactly what you're saying.
Might be going, you know.
But I would think that that's the problem that we have now, and that's why we would want to do this, is as people are doing upgrade, like I can, I can tell you a great example, I'm not going to give you an address, but there's a house in town that if you look on the auditor's site, it's listed as having an attached garage. It's not an attached garage, it's an attached living space. They converted the garage into a laundry room and a living area. That changes the entire value of that home, that without having the garage and now having more living area. That would be something that I would think that with this vehicle being there, you would want to report that, because now you just took your $80,000 house and turned it into a $110,000 house, because you added another 500 square feet of living.
Yeah, I could do that, too, if we were to sell it.
Right. Which CRA, but if you... Most CRAs I would take the...
Just, just know enough, you guys to think about.
Well, I mean, those are the things that we can work out as we're working with Pogomeyer to see, I mean, we can get some hard numbers then and say and present, you know, take them to the auditor and say, okay, if this house did this, and we got a, a good look at it, and the, they've evaluated it now at this, so if the taxes went from $120 a half up to $450 a half, so we're only, we got to take the 120 away from the 450, and then we're only going to give them a 50% reduction on that, so then it's down to whatever, two and a quarter. So that's how much they would actually be getting in savings. But still, it's incentive to do it.
Well, I guess, with your example, I'm just saying, they save more if I not report it, and I know that might not be right, and I, you know, I don't know, legality or anything. I'm just saying, and I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying, our idea is to get people to, to do these things, is this, is this going to do it? I guess that's the only point I'm trying to make. Is this going to do it? Is this going to...
My, my counter to that is that if they're going to put $40,000 inside, you know darn well, they're going to have to do some structural support to it if it's in need of it, so it will increase the value on the outside, and the auditor will see that when they go by. That's what I'm saying, like she said, if they, if it's an old house that has original windows and half of them broken out, and they go by, the next time they'll do the tri, the trian or whenever, and they see that, it's going to increase the value, because she sees new windows, new siding, because they had to.
The issue here is not that they save more money by, by not reporting it. The issue is that whether they report it or not, the county's going to look at building permits, the county's going to do inspections from time to time, and the county's going to increase it whether you want to or not. And by participating in the program, you alleviate some of the burden of the increased tax for your investment. If you choose to fix up the inside of your house without a building permit, then, you know, you're violating those rules. If, so, the issue is not, can you avoid the increase in some way, shape, or form? Yeah, you can, but maybe eventually that they're going to catch up to it. The issue is for those that are planning on doing something, those that are contemplating whether or not it's financially feasible to do something, that we have something in place that says, please, go ahead and do it, and we'll try to help you to avoid some of the costs down the road. I, I don't, I don't know that we can, you know, argue that those that are trying to, you know, avoid property taxes, that somehow, you know, that this, this provides a disincentive for them to not avoid property taxes, but I don't think it does.
And so we need to recess again?
Recess again at 6:27 P.M.
Okay, so...
Sorry about that name.
Oh, that's all right. 6:20, so we'll call public plans and buildings to order at 6:27, and we're just giving you guys permission to put it out for bid, right?
Correct.
We have any discussion on that? If not, and I get...
I'll get, I'll make that motion.
Have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Was there anything else you need to put in that?
No, other than you need a motion to, we're putting it out for bid, so requesting legislation. You have a sample of the draft legislation, is there in the packet? And that is one that we will be considering then after the committee meetings this evening, a special council meeting.
Now, I guess we need clarification on the length for eight... Now, I guess we need clarification on the length for eight E D.
Well, I'm just gonna make it easy for you. Uh, I talked to the soccer club after the last meeting and, um, they reconfigured part of their drawing to leave the poles where they're at. So we don't need to do the east end. So we're not gonna spend ten thousand, and they're working on their new drawing to be able to leave those poles in the spot today.
So it'll work out more than?
Yeah, they they had a mock drawing, but they're doing an aerial view and hopefully it'll be coming in the next couple of meetings to kind of go over and show you. Because I think we still have an open project with some vacant alleys they want to look at, so they'll they'll come prepared with their new drawing, but the poles can stay.
Great, so with that, uh, the discussion for Public Lands and Buildings, if not, I'll ask for a motion to, or I guess I will. The German.
Six thirty?
Six thirty? I think that's the shortest one.
I'm going ahead and call the service committee to order at six thirty P M. I remember President Dan Meyer, Walter E. Brogan, Andy Schott, and myself. First one is amendment to the airport improvement debt.
In your package, you have a copy of, uh, Resolution two oh six dash twenty eighteen. And down under section one, you have, uh, replacing the rotating beacon. And the the service director, were you?
Um, yeah, when they they put it out to bidder, when they did their, uh, numbers, uh, when they remeasured, I do believe at the airport, there was more, uh, taking care of the cracked ceiling was more than what they anticipated. So when they put it out to bid, uh, they actually pulled the beacon out, and the two bids they got to do, the other two items came in under the budget. But it wasn't enough to leave the rotating beacon in, so they pulled it anyway before it went out, because the cost was gonna be too high on the other two items. So, um, we had to, we need to just review the legislation and pull the beacon out, and I think that's something we'll be able to do in the House. I have to start checking some other prices, so.
And we have, we actually only have so much money each year that is provided by the FAA and then the state, they do ninety, the state does five, and we do five. And so there's only so much money each year that we get from that grant, and so this was going to exceed that, so that's why this was pulled out, and so that's why we need, uh, you've got a second piece of legislation.
No.
This is.
July? This is an emergency, this is for, you know.
Okay.
Oh, it's emergency, that's not for tonight.
Not for tonight, right.
And as far as the beacon, we can turn around and reapply for a new grant next year before the beacon. And I know I walked the airport yesterday, and there's some major cracks out there, I mean, there's like cracks that are like three and, and approaching maybe four inches that that they're talking, that the tail wheels on the airplanes, they're clogged, so it's bumping in the light again.
That would be enough to stop.
Yeah, so it's not a thing. So do we need approval to?
We need it, we need to request legislation to amend, correct?
Be a motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion to request that legislation.
Second?
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passed. And then on the water line expansion, I'm sure, like, for this, coming back to the committee to ask the committee whether we want to further negotiate with, is that what the question is?
Well, I was going to give you an update where we were with the water and sewer district based off of doing that on the scale. That's kind of what I was.
Okay, because I just was.
I I, we, uh, met today with Lynn McKeever to go over, we had not seen any maps or any on paper, um, so we went and met with Lynn today for two hours to review, uh, sewer laterals, water lines, uh, how things work and where the pump houses were and the lift stations and, um, so we finally got a good idea of how things work and what kind of previous problems, if any, that he's had. In order for us to sign, uh, or it's up to you guys to approve to take over the water and sewer district. And then Lynn would feel a lot better moving forward with the expansion, if we decide to do that. We had, we do have some concerns about, uh, the amount of help we have in sewers and drains right now with what we're doing with the EPA. With that separation, we have ninety-eight public street going on, my street sweeper, uh, employee is up there part of the time, and filling in in sewers and drains, so it's just spreading our guys really thin, we go to take this over, we're really gonna have to look at the amount of help we have in that department. And we're not gonna get one without the other, in a nutshell. So, uh, we had a good meeting today, unfortunately, I didn't get to talk to Terry or Jeff anymore after it was over, because it was time for them to go home. But I I think I'd like to have them to come to the next meeting, if that's okay with you guys, if you guys can talk about it some more, then make your decision, so we can move forward.
Okay. Go ahead.
So you'd say we're gonna, we're, if we take this on, more unlikely, we may have to take on another employee.
Well, I hope to.
I I'm saying because of, it's gonna, quite a bit of travel.
Well, the good thing is, he's had good luck so far that he hasn't had many repairs. See, that that whole project or that whole thing's gonna be split up between three departments. You're gonna have one group of guys taking care of the water line, you're gonna have the wastewater plant taking care of the the lift stations, and you're gonna have Jeff taking care of the sewer laterals. But I still only got two guys in sewers and drains, and right now, we're videoing to stay ahead of Bruce Brandstetter, to stay ahead of taking care of, uh, videoing our lines, inspecting them, making sure that the, all the projects we've got going, I think we've got eight to ten projects come and run right after the other. They're doing everything they can just to stay ahead of them, plus take care of anything else that might arise with a sinkhole or whatever from a sewer line. So it's just, I just don't know how physically you can cover that much area, not that they've had a lot of problems, but it potentially could have some.
Uh, taking these in, there's income that comes with this, right?
I think the sewer fund was like sixty thousand.
Okay, but is is that built each year, do they, do the people that are being serviced are paying for this service?
Well, they are, but I'm sure they use part of that for their expenses, whether it's at the lift stations or, you know, anything that they might have to fix. So, um, that's part, we haven't got their financial front.
Okay.
We got their income today, but he didn't have the financial to see when they met it.
Okay.
So, we can try to have.
Is the information we need.
Yeah.
I'm also gonna hear the questions.
I I I think we've we've gotta move quicker on this, because it it is really critical on us if we're wanting to expand, because I know five people that live out on Steptser that, three of them live near Stephanie Drive, and you know how Stephanie Drive is in need of, and water. And they've all said, if the line comes, they will tap in with no problem, and I I I'm just stating, and if we, the longer we wait on this, we gotta, we gotta move, we gotta get more information quicker to get this decided, so we can do this expansion, if we do the expansion that way. I I just think we gotta we're moving too slow on this, especially to take over the county's water, because personally, I've talked to all three commissioners, and they are, they're ready to okay it for us.
Well, I I I'm sure they are, but.
No, I'm seeing that they said they're very willing to sell, give it, you know, sign it over to the city of Vizaros without hesitation.
So what what kind of timeline do you think, Mr. Wagner, that we could maybe have another meeting that between now and?
Um, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't have to wait for another scheduled committee, you know, after council, we could schedule one in two weeks, if you need. Because I think we got a three week window.
This is a three week window, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, we could, in two weeks, or next, uh, I'd really have two weeks, personally.
We will need new legislation, the prior legislation that Spotty passed goes for accepting a legal assignment of rights to operate, so to actual take over and operate, receive that mechanic, will be another piece of legislation for this line.
So that almost sounds, we have to come here and after, or at the same meeting, or?
You you could authorize it out of that same meeting if everything met your requirements, but you would have to request a specific legislation to to accept all that. We flush all that out, Joyce McPratt, we flush all out, what all we need and that, because she's probably gonna need some new line items and some other things to to make all that happen, so. If we know when we're gonna have that meeting, and if we know when, you know, what we expect to come out of that meeting, Joyce might get a little bit ahead of it, and we have some of that ready to go at that meeting for you.
So August the first to the second, which is a Wednesday or Thursday?
Personally, a Wednesday would be better for me, because I'm not available, so.
Dear committee.
That's fine, man.
Wednesday, should.
Okay, what time?
They think it after three thirty.
Well, I'll just make it so that it's a little bit later, six o'clock, okay, for you guys, is that in our chair with kids, or?
Should be fine.
Six P M? Wednesday, August the first, six P M, special finance, or I'm sorry, special service.
Should we have finance too?
Second.
Oh, it's first.
First.
Should we have finance too?
Yes, we're gonna have to have finance with it right after, so, is that?
What day was that?
Wednesday first.
So it'd be about six forty five, and I'll be immediately following.
I don't know, I I I'm not, yeah.
Finance?
I'd be, yeah.
Okay. August first to follow, okay? Same discussion. Okay.
As far as a follow-up with, uh, our water holders, are we, are we looking at maybe going to a three inch line?
Um, yeah, John Ernstberger was off last week, and Mike Housen's off this week. I know, um, John Ernstberger was out there yesterday or the day before and actually saw Rich Stricker, and he said it's a lot better. He's satisfied with where it's at, but I I told John, uh, yesterday or the day before, that I wanna call everybody, like, one day next week and see if they're happy, because I think it cut it from like, was twelve minutes, went to twenty seven, and now they're down to fifteen or seventeen, so it's a lot better. They've said it was a lot better, but I wanted to check with, like, Mr. Baum that was here and see what their thoughts were, and then, if not, we'll go off and we'll, they're gonna put a three inch in there, too.
If you care, I spoke to Mr. Baum last night and asked him that question on your behalf, and, uh, he is happy, however. Uh, he knows that it was mentioned that the three inch could be a possibility, he said that'd make them much more happier, he said it's it's better than it was, but not as good as they'd like it to be, and I guess it's, you know, he wasn't angry, but he said that it's still, there's a, here's times where he may still wanna go somewhere else, especially for the one or two people ahead of him waiting.
Right.
So he said that he felt the three inch would be, uh, one great improvement, so.
Okay, thanks.
As far as Mr. Baum, he got gotten back with me too, and he said that he's happy, but three inch would make it that much faster, because he's.
Well, I guess I don't need.
He's from a half hour down to eighteen minutes to fill his truck, and he said it used to be ten minutes.
Okay.
So.
Well, we'll, we'll just line up to change it then, we'll we'll change it to a three inch.
So you can do that in-house, correct?
Yeah, the situation with Crestline and nineteen one hundred. Uh, I was informed that they have, nobody has received any letters out there explaining the possibility of the line going out there. I'm just asking the organization, if you're gonna send letters.
We will, but I but I still think we need to know if we're looking at one and a half times the rate, or we're gonna be the same, and, uh, that's outside the state of the woods.
Right.
That that's, that's up to council, not me.
Right, I'm just saying, I'm asking.
I want to send a letter, but I want to include all the information.
Correct.
Correctly, which I guess is what I'm saying.
Those houses also impact our annization warrants as well, because some of those houses are contagious, so whether or not we wanna maintain the annization warrant is is part of that consideration of the one versus one and a half as well.
But there again, with the understanding though that they have to have super.
It is both details, but it's also one of those things that a lot of people reference to, when they say if they don't want our water to appear, you know, they have to.
Could you put together for us some numbers about, uh, you know, whether it's one and a half times, whether it's, well, you know, give us some idea of how much money it's going to generate, where that's going to leave us as far as.
Can I get a ring?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You know what I mean.
I know I had a conversation with Mr. McKeever, Lynn McKeever, and he said that he was starting to put some numbers together, so I'm happy to.
And, uh, pardon, Chairman, I also talked to him previously, and he said, in his opinion, we should go to the regular water rate, not the one and a half times. He said you're gonna lose, I forget what the percentage was, and it was, he said it was minimal, but by picking up a number of people would compensate the loss of the half a percent.
Right.
So he said, it it's a balancing act, if, and it would make it, by us doing that, and if we do take on tank, if, I'm hoping to take on the county's line by reducing that, you'll have a lot of happy people out there by reducing the rate, so. Because we're gonna take off, depending on how we do, we're just gonna be taking off the, uh, fee that they have to pay to pay the debt.
That comes off.
But what I'm saying, that can make a difference there too, so. I'm strongly for to reduce it to regular rate, to entice them to.
Well, let's take a look at the numbers and let's see what all is, what all is sitting out there and, uh, what kind of, uh, an impact it could have, so.
I'll bring that on each one.
Everybody else got anything?
I do.
Oh, okay.
I do. I thought it was gonna be on the list tonight, but, uh, saw the rates rates, we haven't done anything. And I know I was talking with the administration, we did that last week, and we were talking about, uh, how much in the hole we could possibly be, because we haven't raised rates, and the longer we go, the worse it's gonna get, but if if we spend everything that's budgeted, which of course we generally don't, but we fixed one small leak with the changes we did in personnel, and that's saving us roughly three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars a month. But in looking at what we had projected that we were gonna bring in, because we thought rates were gonna go up, we're gonna be shy about seventy thousand dollars. And the budget was based on that rate room, so we need to figure out something quickly.
Hopefully, we're asking for facts and figures at the last meeting, I mean, that's what we've been waiting for, so.
So maybe at the next meeting, we could have.
And we'll have that as well.
There's gonna be a long list for that next special meeting.
Yes, it is.
That would be a lot done then. All right, I'm gonna recess at six forty nine.
I'll call finance to order at six forty nine P M, the swimming pool repair bid. So we just really need to make a motion to send the swimming pool repairs off the bid, correct?
Correct, you need to, uh, you received a report of bid or a report from, uh, the, uh, Public Lands and Buildings that, uh, uh, are in favor of that, and, uh, we need your signature on the request sheet and the committee's approval. and the committee's approval. I'll take that.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the same thing with the amendment of the airport improvement bid, just need to make a motion to send that out for bid, came from the service committee, and then the amendment was taken out for replacing the beacon. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a specification? And now the motion to adjourn with regular meeting?
So moved, second.
We are adjourned at six fifty P.M.
Who made the motions, who did you adjourn?
Mark and Kevin.
Before we do the regular, I need signatures for those requests.
I need Mr. Wireball's signature.
Didn't we have, back in the, you made that statement regarding the?
Where do we go then? Special meeting in Visar City Council for July nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, at six fifty-two P.M. is called to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Walk off, please.
McKeever?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Wireball?
Here.
Trucca?
Here.
Shaq?
Here.
This is the time where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Does anyone here to address council this evening? No one? In consideration of proposed legislation for the first time?
We have one resolution, Resolution number two thirty, twenty eighteen, authorizing and directing the service safety director on behalf of the city of Visar's Ohio to advertise for bids and to enter into a contract or contracts not to exceed the already budgeted two hundred thousand dollars with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the swimming pool improvements, and finally authorizing and directing the Visar City auditor to draw warrant or warrants and payment therefore from the appropriate appropriations and declaring an emergency. Let's refer back to finance.
Okay, thank you. Prior to going on with this, this is a special finance committee meeting, and it was called to, by the mayor, to handle this one item, which was to expedite the going out for bids for the, the swimming pool repair, so that we could get it completed prior to this year without waiting an additional three weeks or more to get to it, so that's why that was done. Okay, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we refer this back to the fi, uh, to the originating committee. So, two, Resolution two thirty dash twenty eighteen is referred back to finance committee. This is time for public participation, any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Does anyone care to address council? No one? Committee report then, finance committee?
Finance committee is favorable to Resolution two thirty dash two thousand eighteen, the swimming pool repair bid.
Okay, I need a motion to accept this report?
So moved, second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Wireball, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation, for the second and third reading of proposed Resolution two thirty, two thirty dash twenty eighteen, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the readings of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency? This is for the swimming pool repair bid.
So moved, second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirty, twenty eighteen.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution two thirty dash twenty eighteen, the swimming pool repair bid?
So moved, second.
Foat?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucca?
Yes.
Shaq?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Resolution two thirty dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted, thank you very much. Uh, we're all here this evening, so we don't need to excuse anyone.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, you adjourn, so finish the sentence, okay? Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. McKeever to adjourn, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We are adjourned at six fifty-six P.M. Continue. Thank you.